Okay. Please to call the board meeting to order. Please to call the board meeting to order. Roll call.
Trustee Markwart.
Here.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Here.
Trustee Schenk.
Here.
Trustee Cook.
Here.
President Byrne.
Here.
And trustees Forrester and Takaoke gave prior notice that they would not be in attendance.
Would everybody please stand for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag. Okay. Your motion to appoint Trustee Cook as a protestant.
So made.
Motion is second, roll call.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
Trustee Cook.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Motion carries. Are there any citizens wishing to address the board on something that's not on the agenda? Or is... yeah.
I'll try to make it so you can hear me. Good evening, everybody and board. I'm here tonight to talk briefly for a few minutes about some situations that are taking place in the current District 128, school district.
John, can you give your name?
Your name...
Oh, I'm sorry, John Hutzel Vernon Hills. I have two daughters who are in the Vernon Hills School System, D128. I just live down the street, actually. Really love this community, really love the school system here. We moved here for that. And what we encountered in the last year or so is discovering that there is a lot of controversy, a lot of chaos that's taking place in our school district. I brought with me tonight seven individual, two-page FAQs about some things that have been going on that I'd like to provide to the board so they're aware of some of the worries and concerns we have as parents. Last night at the D128 School Board Meeting, we had over 200 parents there and over 200 teachers. There was also a vote of no confidence presented by the Teachers Union yesterday that had over 90% of the teachers voting for the removal of the superintendent. She has unfortunately not listened to the teachers for the last two years approximately since she's been brought in. She comes with a lot of, well, let's just say there's a lot of controversy and everything that's taken place in her ten years prior to being here. She's been in four jobs in seven years. You can Google her name. Her name is Superintendent Herman, and you will start seeing that she made news everywhere when she was out in California, San Francisco, outside in Palo Alto, and even up in Middleton, Wisconsin. She's brought in four new converging education platforms. Vernon Hills High School and Libertyville was just ranked eighth and 12th in the state. And all of a sudden, for some reason, our whole education system has to be turned over. And there was several parents, including a petition of 1,100 signatures by parents who are concerned about what's happening in the school district. So if you have children that are going to go into Vernon Hills High School or Libertyville High School, obviously, this is Vernon Hills township, but you need to be aware that there's a lot of circumstances going on right now that are concerning to so many parents. Like I said, we were in the gymnasium last night. There were over 200 parents, 200 teachers, and the teachers voted no confidence. It was in the Daily Herald on NBC News. It was all over the news in the local media. People just need to be aware. If anybody is interested, there are a couple of Facebook pages and other social media sites where you can find it. Anybody can contact me. But I do think that everybody needs to be aware what's happening in our district because it will affect your children. So with that said, all I'd like to do is just make you aware, pay attention, be aware, be informed, so you have good information on what's happening in District 128 because it is affecting our students and our teachers. There's not support mechanisms in place that really need to be there for all these initiatives. And if you look at the evidence and the information that's been provided, it's really remarkable what's going on. And we have to make sure that we're securing the future of our community and our children who will come back and live in this community. Right now, just as a side note, the two Catholic schools, Carmel and what, I can't remember the other one, they have had their highest eighth-grade admission test placements by eighth-graders that they've ever had in the last 20 years. They've had over 400 students at Carmel alone have applied for the eighth-grade admissions. So they're moving out of the public school system because of what's happening in D128. So with that said, I'll conclude. I just appreciate everyone's awareness, just be informed, pay attention to what's going on because it will affect your kids, it will affect our community, it will affect our property values, especially when you start seeing things like this happening. So I don't know who I need to give these to, but I'd like to give them so that there's seven copies here that can be distributed at some point to the board members to review. And with that said, thank you very much for listening. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, this board worked quite a number of years to get Vernon Hills High School built, and I still say that's the best thing in all the time I've been on the board was getting that high school built. And as a nearly 40-year educator, we'll stay on top of it, believe me. Any other citizens? Something not on the agenda? Okay. Then we'll go to the Village President's Report. We have several proclamations. The first one is for, and I'm hoping, is it Pastor Michael Pastor? Is that how it's pronounced? Is Michael here? Yeah. Am I pronouncing it correctly?
Yes.
See, with a last name like mine, I like to make sure I get people's names right because mine's been pronounced all my life. Proclamation congratulating Michael Pastor on earning the rank of Eagle Scout, whereas Michael Pastor of Troop 273 is a Life Boy Scout and earned the rank of Eagle Scout, which is the highest honor to be bestowed by the Boy Scouts and stands for the ultimate representation of citizenship and good character. Michael's Eagle Scout project was building a fire pit with seating at his church. Michael received his Eagle Scout rank in a Court of Honor on March 16, 2024, with recognition of his personal dedication and extraordinary achievement. Now therefore, Roger L. Byrne, President and the Board of Trustees of the Village of Vernon Hills hereby proclaim that Michael Pastor be congratulated for honor and honored for earning the rank of Eagle Scout dated this 21st day of May, 2024. Congratulations. And you're welcome to say something if you'd like. You don't have to, but you're always welcome to.
Thank you to Vernon Hills for raising me in this place. I wasn't born around here, but I came in after a little bit, and it was a great school system to be raised in. Vernon Hills is top-ranked in the state, and it will be for a very long time. No matter what incident is happening, it's a great school to always be at.
Thank you. Thank you. Our second one is a proclamation in recognition of service for Arthur P. Fink. Is Art here tonight?
He's not.
He's not? Okay. Vernon Hills Police Department. Whereas Art Fink entered into public service as a 911 dispatcher in May of 1994 and served as the, with the villages of Wakanda and Lincolnshire in that capacity until 1998. Art was then sworn in as a police officer for the village of Lake Bluff before joining Vernon Hills Police Department in 1999. Art took on various roles and assignments throughout his Vernon Hills police career. Art served as an evidence technician, juvenile officer, field training officer, traffic unit officer, tactical officer, and truck enforcement officer. Through Art's dedication to professional development, countless officers received the benefit of a positive example and mentor. Art truly distinguished himself in the area of truck enforcement. Art was a fierce advocate for the enforcement of truck regulations which have a direct impact on the roadway safety in the community. Art was a dedicated member of the Illinois Truck Enforcement Association and served as a field instructor for several of its classes. In 2015, Art was recognized as the association's Glen Strabel Award winner, which was created to recognize law enforcement officers who furthered the professionalism of truck law enforcement in Illinois. Art was a decorated officer, having received many multiple commendations and letters of thanks from members of the public and neighboring law enforcement agencies alike. Art was directly credited with saving multiple lives during his career. The residents of the village of Vernon Hills have been greatly rewarded by Art's service to the community as a police officer. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the President and the Board of Trustees of the Village of Vernon Hills, on behalf of the entire Vernon Hills community, extend to Art Fink their gratitude and thanks for his 25 years of service to the village dated this 21st day of May, 2024. So our thanks to Art. Chief, would you like to say something?
Yeah, thank you. And, you know, Art, Art just didn't want a lot of fanfare, but I think it's always important that we recognize a career, you know, so honorably served. You mentioned Art was a truck enforcement officer. Everyone in the region knew that. The truckers knew that. They, they also understood that Art was fair when it came to discretion on enforcing those laws, and he wasn't out there to just hammer people, but he helped keep our streets safe. And he has educated many others on, on that skill. And I'm going to end it with just one little story that will, I think everyone can appreciate when we talk about discretion. There was a, I watched a body camera video about two and a half years ago, shortly after we got body cameras, maybe three, three years ago, and Art was dealing with a resident that had been overserved, had overconsumed, and was not in her right mind. And at some point, Art was trying to just keep her safe and keep her from harming herself, and she decided to square off and punch Art right in the face. And his reaction was to grab both hands, and he used these words. He said, "That wasn't very nice." And that was about the extent of his reaction, other than arresting her professionally and, and seeing that she got to where she needed to be, and, and we charged her. But it takes, it takes a big person to take a punch and just simply respond by saying that's not very nice. And I think that typifies the type of service that Art served. So we wish him well.
And Art is also a big person, not only in your sense, but literally too.
Yep, yep, that's right.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. And I've known a long time, that sounds like something he would have said, yeah. Okay, our last proclamation is Military Appreciation Month, May of 2024. Whereas Congress designated May as Military National Appreciate, National Military Appreciation Month in 1999 to ensure the nation was given a chance to publicly show their appreciation for troops past and present. May was chosen because it has many individual days marked to note our military's achievements, including VE Day, Victory in Europe, which is May 8th, commemorating the end of World War II in Europe, Armed Forces Day, May 21st, a day to celebrate and honor the men and women currently serving, and Memorial Day, May 30th, a day of mourning, a moment to honor the men and women who died while serving the United States military. The village has a history of recognizing all who have been in the United States Armed Forces and created the Veterans Memorial Arbor Theater, which pays tribute to the service and sacrifice of our nation's soldiers, sailors, airmen, and marines. The village created Operation Welcome Home, a program that formally recognizes residents returning home after service in combat. The village most recently created the Vernon Hills Honors Military Banner Program to formally recognize residents who have served in the United States Armed Forces by placing their image, branch, and service, and if applicable, their combat deployment information on a Boulevard banner. The village consists of numerous residents who have served and/or are serving in the U.S. Armed Forces, to include many who have joined us tonight. Numerous village employees and board members have served with honor and distinction, including former trustee James Hire, United States Navy, World War II, trustee James Schultz, United States Army, along with numerous members of the Police Department, including Officer Casey Burgsneider, United States Navy, Sergeant Kyle Belkey, United States Marine Corps, Afghanistan, Telecommunication Manager Ty Jameson, United States Marine Corps, Iraq, and Officer Stacy Severnson, United States Air Force, among others. The village is also home to the American Legion Vernon Hills Post 1247, which advocates for veterans and leads numerous community service initiatives, including the presentation of the colors at parades and special events, as well as conducting remembrance ceremonies on Memorial Day. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that Roger L. Byrne, President, and the Village Board of Trustees do hereby express our sincerest appreciation to all who are serving and to all who have served in the Armed Forces of the United States dated this 21st day of May, 2024. Okay. And that leads us into our next item, and, yeah, did you have something else to say?
Yeah, didn't we forget Chief Kreese and, and Mr. Petrillo for, they both served.
Well, amongst others, but... They generally try to duck that, but, yeah, you guys both served in it. In fact, both of the, both Chief and, and Mr. Petrillo were those guys who were jumped out of planes, so, yeah. Thank you for your service, all of you.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Speaking of Assistant Village Manager Petrow, it's your stage.
Thank you, sir. Good evening. Welcome, friends, family, and comrades. It has been a privilege to meet those in attendance this evening and learn about your military service during the application process. And it was an honor for the village to host you, your family, and friends for dinner at our municipal golf course. Thank you to the Vernon Hills Police Department for covering the cost of the dinner, just like back in the day at the chow hall or at the mess deck, sharing a meal in the company of exceptional people, celebrating service, and enjoying the camaraderie. Nothing better. Tonight's village board meeting is an opportunity to celebrate your service and formally recognize the class of 2024 Military Banner recipients. Approximately two years ago, at the urging of Dr. David Oppenheim, staff presented a concept to the village board for a program to formally recognize residents who serve our nation. In partnership with the American Legion Post 1247, a program was developed with the intent to recognize the men and women from the village of Vernon Hills who hold veteran status or are currently serving with honor in any branch of the U.S. Armed Forces. This program was formally adopted in 2022 and is known as the Vernon Hills Honors Military Banner Program. The program allows for qualified persons to be honored by having a Boulevard banner created displaying name, image, rank, branch of service, and combat deployment if applicable. An application period opens each year with banners being produced in February. Banners are displayed on a village utility pole from Memorial Day to Veterans Day in beautiful Vernon Hills. During the fall of 2022, 11 residents were recognized to kick off and celebrate the introduction of this program with a total of 21 residents recognized during 2023. At the end of each display period, the banners are retrieved and presented to the service member or family in recognition and appreciation of dedicated service. In reflection, pictured above, is the class of 2023 Banner recipients. Tonight, we are pleased to present the class of 2024. While each person has a distinct legacy and unique service history, all have two important criteria in common. Each has served or called Vernon Hills home, and each has served their country with honor in the U.S. Armed Forces. Banners will be on display at the intersection of Hawthorne Parkway and Lakeview and on Lakeview Parkway north to the entrance of Century Park. This area has recently seen significant site improvement to include widened roadways, the restoration of Harvey Lake, the planting of trees in beautiful Century Park, and these roadways will lead all to the site of our summer programming and events to include July 4th fireworks, Vernon Hills Days, and the Park District Rib Fest. All who visit our community will know this village honors and recognizes those who have served. I will now announce the names of each recipient of a military banner. The order in which persons are presented this evening is the order in which the village and legion received applications. At the conclusion, we can collectively express our appreciation to each recipient for service to our nation. Let us begin. Sergeant Jose Gonzalez, United States Marine Corps, service in Iraq. Lieutenant Mark Orble, United States Navy. Corporal Stefan Laneman, United States Marine Corps. S.K. 3 Donald Friedman, United States Navy, service in Vietnam. Lieutenant Robert Brongiel, United States Army, service in Vietnam. Robert is unable to join us tonight as he is recovering some surgery, but we are joined by Robert's family who is representing him. Sergeant Eugene Childers, United States Air Force. Corporal Emil Iverson, United States Marine Corps. Emil's son, Corporal John Iverson, United States Marine Corps. John is represented by his father and friends this evening. Corporal Raymond Michael Los, United States Marine Corps, service in Vietnam. Sergeant Robert Shaw, United States Army, service in Korea. Robert passed in 2023 and is represented by family and friends this evening. Staff Sergeant Randy Burt, United States Army, service in Vietnam. Specialist Jonathan S. Fujiu, United States Army, service in Iraq. Private First Class Bradley Schwartz, United States Marine Corps. Bradley is currently serving on active duty and is represented by his family here tonight. Specialist 5 Gary A. Cox, United States Army, service in Vietnam. Tech 5 Stanley A. Spiller, United States Army, service in Europe during World War II. Stanley is represented by family and friends here tonight. Sergeant Glenn Scully, United States Army, service in Vietnam. Glenn passed in 2007 and is represented by family and friends here tonight. Airmen First Class John Vaughn, United States Air Force. John is represented by family and friends here tonight. Airmen Second Class David Silverton, United States Air Force. Sergeant Anthony Cinderman, United States Marine Corps. Private First Class Harold H. Weiner, United States Army, service in Japan and Korea during World War II. Hal recently passed and is represented by friends and family here tonight. These are the Vernon Hills Honors 2024 Banner recipients. I would now like to present Todd Renahan, Commander of American Legion Post 1247, former recipient of a banner and father of a soldier currently serving on active duty. Commander Renahan, the floor is yours.
Thank you is not enough. This is the third year that I've been here. I'm going to keep doing it, I guess, right? But, but, a round of applause, it wasn't quite the United Center, but you get that feeling, don't you?
Yeah.
It's something else. It's, it's the real thing. And again, I can't thank you enough. The village helped us with the banners. For those of you that weren't here at the beginning, it was kind of an idea by Dr. Oppenheim. Then how are we going to pay for it? And it got done. None of the veterans had to pay a dime out of this. So again, thank you for that. I've got myself and my daughter, and there's a few other families you'd have too, so thank you for that. But we want to thank the Police Department for taking care of the food tonight. We had it over at the Nine Hole Golf Course, so, still golfing, so make sure, thank you, gentlemen, we appreciate your help there with, with that. So thank you very much. And then the golf course as well. But tonight's about everybody behind me. All the veterans have served and their families have supported them, whether it was at that time or later on. And there were a couple of people on there we talked about, World War II veterans. That really gets you. One of those veterans, Stanley Spiller, earlier this spring turned 100. He had some stories. He had some stories. I'll just leave it at that. But at 100 years old, and if all goes well, like everybody's got to have a goal. I said Stanley right in the front seat of the truck at the parade in the Fourth of July. So make sure you waved, waved to Stanley, he'll wave back to you, and give these guys another round of applause. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Todd, and thank you for everything Legion does for the community. You guys are, you guys are great. You guys are great. Comments? Yeah?
We've been sitting, is it possible for everyone who's having a banner, if you could stand up for one more round of applause so we can, if you're able to stand up or just put your little wave?
Did you want to speak? Young lady would like to speak here.
I'd like to just say my dad, Stanley Spiller, is a World War II vet. His father was a World War I vet. And I think his legacy would be, we need to spread democracy. I know we don't want to do politics here, but I truly believe with what my dad and what his dad went through, we need to spread democracy. You have to vote. You might not appreciate our candidates, but you have to figure out who's the best candidate. And by you not voting, you're not spreading democracy. And that is the best way we can stop potentially a World War III war. And that is why my son-in-law just went through 10 months in Kuwait. He was deployed. So same with the Police Department. You guys are protecting us, so we have to spread democracy and a way of living together with, we can disagree to disagree, but be respectful. And that's the legacy of my dad and his dad that was a World War I vet and II. We don't want a third world war, okay? So we can all spread that, and I would really appreciate that. Thank you so much. You guys are awesome, men and women. I really appreciate this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
By May, I think everyone is welcome to stay for the remaining
By May, I think everyone is welcome to stay for the remaining of the, in lightening Village Board meeting. But if, if not, dismissed.
Yeah, you notice we don't force you to stay for the rest of the meeting. Yeah. Well, that, that goes to, uh, Assistant Village Manager Patrillo.
You're gonna miss website design.
Okay. Shall we continue?
Yes. Um, all right. Next item is the Village Website Design Update.
Just dive right into it?
Yeah. Yeah, you're next on the agenda.
Good evening, trustees, good evening, uh, President Byrne. I'm Lynn Brandl, I do some communications at the, the Will, and the, if I can be helpful, I jump in. Jeff Hemmeseff has been working on the Village Website for the VHPD. Mike Storto's up in the booth, and we kinda took the reins because staff's been working on the website for quite some time. Um, if you know the history of it, uh, we started off, uh, maybe nine, 10 years ago. Nine, 10 years ago, the, the website was done by Joe Carey and Will Rockwell, worked really well. But in the last few years, we found that more than 75% of the people, um, come to our website from a small screen, a phone, a tablet, you know, an iPad, and that's a lot different than coming to it on a big desktop where you have a cursor and can look at those dropdowns and find what you need. So with 75% of the people coming through a phone, they're not finding what they need. That means more calls into the front desk, more calls into the non-emergency number. And so staff had looked at a lot of options, we talked to a lot of other municipalities, listened to sales pitches, did the whole thing. And then kinda late in the game, our provider Civic Plus kinda came forward and said, well, guess what? We could move you to a better platform that's scalable for a phone and do all these things at no cost, and it would be easy. So we're like, I wish you'd have kinda come up with that a little bit sooner, cause it's like a no-brainer, right? So it was very, no or very little cost, they could do the things we needed to do, and it wouldn't take a lot of staff time, because rebuilding a website means it's like building a house. You've got a house over here and you're still living in one house, and you're trying to keep both houses going. This did not impact staff at all. We could do it, uh, fairly seamlessly. It was a little slow, because when you don't pay for something, they do stretch it out a little bit on you. Um, but we were able to come up with things that we think are very useful. We tried to keep it professional, this isn't trying to look like something new, it isn't earth-shattering, it isn't a redesign, there's a little bit of a refresh, but it's a new operating system underneath, so when we do turn it on, where I think you'll really see the benefit is if you're looking at it from a phone or from a tablet, like 75% of our visitors are. So, um, what you see up there is, I ca- as I said, the refresh makes it a little bit more visible, there's some ADA compliance issues that we were also able to build in with this new free platform. Um, you can see we have buttons across there, those buttons can all be changed. So if we find out that we have a, uh, a snowstorm and we have to remind people to not park on the streets, we can put one of them up there. Right now you see trash recycling is up there, it's because the front desk said, everybody's always complaining about their trash net getting picked up, and then they have a very hard time getting them the number and getting them to call Waste Management. It's there now, and you can click it, and when you click on it, when it's really working, you'll be able to call, call direct to Waste Management. We can move those things around. Underneath, clickable buttons that you'll be able to click on your phone that show you the people, the departments. So between those two sets of buttons, you should find everything you need in the first screen, even on your phone. We'll still have the big dropdowns up at the top, we've been working to, um, kinda clean up the categories, we'll have all these pieces. We still have the news underneath, we still have the calendar, there's some other features that are cleaned up, but again, we're trying to stay professional, clean, do it for no money, not bother staff, and just get this ready to roll for you. So, that's what the, that's what the village is gonna look like. Now, Jeff and, and the people over at VHPD, we also found out a lot of the clicks for our websites go to the VHPD, because you've got a lot of information you're trying to share. You used your site really well, but we thought, why not, uh, get a, get a, get this a little bit more functionality for you guys? So hopefully, these same type of buttons, hopefully, when somebody's on the phone and they're sitting there and they want a police report, maybe they won't call the, uh, non-emergency number, maybe they'll click the button and do what they need to do. So, our hope was, and, and again, Jeff can change all those, when we get the data in, we see what people are looking at, see what people don't understand, we can change those buttons based on what everybody needs to hopefully keep people informed. So, sorry, I spoke too much, Jeff.
I'm looking over at the chief, cause I think this is the first time he's seeing it, you know? I've been working with Deputy Chief Halybets to come up with images and what dropdown we wanted, we just wanna make the whole process simpler for the residents. Um, in the last year, I've been streaming down, I mean, the content's still there, that's not gonna change, but I took the initiative to kinda clean it up. A lot of stuff goes on, and I think it was better suited for our social media, single-day events, but, um, but the overall content's still there, it's just a little more streamlined, and it's easier for, uh, the visitor to get to, get to items. I just added the banner up there, there's actually, every time you refresh, I have five banners set up, so, I don't know, Mike, if you're able to switch them. So we tried out, we gotta get Billy in there.
That's a great shot, by the way. And it will load faster at home, there's a little delay from up above.
I mean, we'll add it, we'll, we can tweak it, we can add more photos, we can take some out. But overall, we just wanted to make it easier for people. Working with the staff here, with, Lynn's been great, Mike, and then looking at a lot of other websites and see what people do. So, uh, we met with the department heads about a few weeks ago, a month ago. So, um, so I guess the, the last thing we wanna do is throw it out at you and see what, see what you think. Anything that needs to be tweaked, I think we're expected to go live in about a month.
Yeah, uh, we're, we're, again, Civic Plus, when you, when you don't pay, they kinda move you wherever they want to. Um, right now they have a, a sign to roll out on June 20th, which means there'd be about an hour in the middle of the day where people probably couldn't see anything, and then the new, the new, uh, format, the style sheet should just flow over top, and then people like Jeff and Mike and I will be sitting there frantically making sure everything just flowed over the top, and it should be live again, and we'll make sure we announce it prior to, so if anybody needs something. But the earliest day they could get us was June 20th, and when you don't pay for anything and you're begging for a lot of changes, um, I, I think we can make that work for y'all, but, uh, so, uh, we thought it was a, a no-risk answer to what we could do for y'all, so.
Okay. Um, comments from, or board or manager?
Just a special thank you to, to Lynn and Jeff and Mike Storto, they did put a lot of hard work into this. I think the design is much improved, it's cleaner, um, test it on your, your tablet, your smartphone, uh, this is a big improvement, so thank you all for your hard work, we really appreciate it.
Thanks for the opportunity.
Yeah, and I'd like to add my personal thanks for all the hard work on the, uh, the presentation that we used at the Ask the Mayor's Lunch on that, cause we used it again just recently, and Mike helped set it up, we went over to, John and I went over to Everly and talked to their people and were able to use that there, so thank you very much for that.
I'm glad it was helpful. If you have any comments or have anything you want to see done differently, remember there's a lot we as staff can do. We as staff can make a lot of changes, we can, we can pop icons out, we can do those things all the way through. Uh, now would be the time to say if you want anything, and otherwise we'll kinda, you know, just maybe ask for a blessing and roll this out, because, as, as again, we weren't trying to be earth-shattering, this isn't a redesign, it's a refresh, but it should have the functionality that should help.
Well, I would think some of the comments will come, I know, at least for me personally, after it rolls out and you get a chance to play with it and, and see if there are any glitches in terms of the user-friendly part of it, but this looks like it'll be much more user-friendly than the current. Other comments from board?
It looks great, and just kinda, well, as, as, as it rolls out, well, you know, you could, things you need to just tweak.
Exactly.
And Chief, did you ever think Billy was gonna get this much attention? I mean, that's, that's a great.
Yeah, it's, she's been an amazing hit, we're coming up on a year, and it's, uh, been a wonderful addition. The only regret is, uh, we waited as long as we did, but she's a great hit.
Mike could refresh it one more, one of my favorite pictures, I think, is coming up. Um, no, one more time. There you go. A perfect night, this was taken at, uh, oh, I think it was the Fourth of July Parade.
During the COVID.
During COVID. It was a great picture, and, I mean, I wish the vets would have seen that tonight, but...
We should do a seasonal, uh, competition. No, seriously, for like presidents, they send one in, they will get one of these pop-ups.
And it's eas- it's easy to do, no? One of the things, we did try to make them long and skinny, so you get right to the content. So, when you're out there looking for pictures, take long, skinny pictures for us, please.
We can, we can work it, we can edit it. I'm learning.
Landscape, not portrait.
Yeah, super landscape, so. All right, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you for everything, appreciate it. Uh, anybody else from staff have any speaking parts tonight? No? Okay, then, um, next would be omnibus vote agenda, our, our longest omnibus agenda I think I've ever seen. Is there a motion to approve items A through C?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second, any comments or questions? Okay, hearing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
Trustee Markarth.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
President Byrne. Chairman Pro Tem Cook.
Aye. Motion carries. Um, no unfinished business, correct?
Correct.
So we'll just move on to new business, approval and passage of ordinance 2024-073 and ordinance amending 2022-097, which approved plans for the redevelopment of 890 Milwaukee Avenue. Director Jennings.
Thank you. The item that I passed out to you just prior to the start of the meeting, uh, relates to this particular agenda item, it is a revised version of ordinance 2024-073. Um, just to try to clarify, um, in simplest terms, we had a, a little bit of miscommunication between myself and the petitioner, uh, when I was preparing the materials for this, so the revised, uh, ordinance you see in front of you, uh, should reflect accurately what the petitioner is requesting, uh, which I will go to here and then have them come up and, and, uh, let me know how I did. Um, so KAVA, uh, which would go into Unit 100 of 890 Milwaukee, uh, which is the former Denny's, is, uh, requesting modifications to the approved appearance, uh, you can see here how it looks today. The, uh, KAVA unit on the left, uh, was originally approved to be a spa in combination with Wild Fork. Uh, KAVA is now requesting a, uh, a more, uh, color, uh, color scheme that's more consistent with their brand imagery. So, what you can see here is, uh, halfway done, so the, uh, the left side, which is the south elevation, is a color called alabaster, that is what they're requesting for the entire facade, is a Mediterranean restaurant, the theme, uh, and the branding is more light and airy, uh, hence the request. Uh, and we have a Photoshop version that shows completion of the painting of the facade with that alabaster color. So, that is what the ordinance in front of you, uh, reflects, is these images, that rendering that shows the alabaster applied to, uh, to the remainder of the facade.
Question, I understand that the rendering shows the, and we're here about the alabaster, uh, those windows are not part of the deal, correct?
That's correct, that is, while they're under construction, they had some papered over instead of with brown construction.
That, that will go away, right? Yeah, yeah, I just wanna, just wanna make sure before we go approving. Comments or questions from the board, or? Cause I drove by it the other day and I, I think it'll, I think it'll look fine.
You're welcome to come and add anything to it if you thought...
Anybody at all, anything?
I'm Julianne Strife, I'm the Design Director for KAVA, and I just wanted to say how unbelievably excited we are to be in Vernon Hills. Um, it's kinda hard to follow up all the vets, but, um, it's a very tough act to follow, but this is a really special restaurant for us, you know, we built a couple before, but this is the first of a completely new design that'll be a model for everything we're building throughout the rest of the country, so there's a lot of love that went into this one, you know, we could've said, oh, we'll leave it the gray, but we really know that there's a lot of people that are gonna be visiting, and we want it to be the best it could be, so really appreciate your consideration and, um, any open questions? And yes, those are temporary, they'll come around.
Yeah, that's what I just wanted to make sure, yeah. Well, when you approve something, y- y- you wanna make sure somebody's gonna say, well, that was part of what you approved, you know what I'm saying?
Absolutely. Any other questions?
When do you open?
Yeah.
Uh, June 28th, fingers crossed.
And if you'd like to promote?
Absolutely, so it's a wonderful Mediterranean concept.
Is there a microphone for the eight people at home watching?
Of course. Uh, it's a Mediterranean restaurant that was started, um, about 15 years ago by three Greek sons, uh, first-generation Americans that wanted to bring the food that their moms, um, had cooked for them, uh, basically, you wanted to spread the love, and, um, it's really taken off within the last couple of years, and, uh, it's, this is our second restaurant in Illinois, um, and the, again, like I said, the first one, that's kind of starting this whole new chapter for us, so, really good, um, braised lamb, lots of vegetarian options if lamb isn't your thing, uh, lamb meatballs if lamb is your thing, so, something for everyone here.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from anyone?
People are, people, people are talking about it, and they know about it, so.
We're getting out there, we're getting out there slowly.
Are you hiring right now, or?
Yes, we are, our operations team has just started, um, since we're five weeks away from opening, this is right about the time that we started to, um, we're starting to hire, so, for those eight people at home, if you're looking for a job at a great place, we are hiring.
I know one and he's two bedrooms down from me at Holmes, looking for a job, so.
Oh, fantastic.
My son.
Fantastic. We have a really, um, strong program for promotion within, too, so a lot of our area leaders started in the restaurant and worked their way up, and they've got a new program we just rolled out to, to really develop the people that work for us.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Is there a motion then to approve, uh, the revised version of ordinance 2024-073?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
Trustee Markarth.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tem Cook.
Aye. Motion carries. Um, next item is approval and passage of ordinance 2024-074, an ordinance authorizing approval to waive the competitive bidding process for the purchase of an additional software related to our current body camera, uh, and the total of 43-month expenditure of $36,704.36 for the purchase and contracting of the...
People are talking about it and they know about it, so.
We're getting out there. We're getting out there slowly.
Are you hiring right now or?
Yes, we are. Our operations team has just started. Since we're five weeks away from opening, this is right about the time that we started to, we're starting to hire. So, for those eight people at home, if you're looking for a job at a great place, we are hiring.
I know one and he's two bedrooms down from me at Holmes looking for a job, so.
Oh, fantastic. Fantastic. We have a really strong program for promotion within too. So, a lot of our area leaders started in the restaurant and worked their way up and they've got a new program we just rolled out to really develop the people that work for us.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Is there a motion then to approve the revised version of ordinance 2024-073?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
Trustee Markarth.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tem Cook.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item is approval and passage of ordinance 2024-074, an ordinance authorizing approval to waive the competitive bidding process for the purchase of an additional software related to our current body camera and the total of 43-month expenditure of $36,704.36 for the purchase and contracting of the Axon Respond Plus software from Axon Enterprises. Chief?
Thank you. And I'm going to introduce Commander Chris Burmaster, who will tell you a little more about this, but I'll just start by saying this is a, this is a feature that when we bought our last body cameras, was presented to me by staff and at the time, there were still some questions that we had about whether or not it was quite ready for primetime and whether or not the cost of the system and the efforts that we thought we had to go through to make sure it was worthwhile was timely. So, we just, we just held off and I told the staff, I said no for now. And then somehow we got through the budget process without me reconsidering that. And then very recently, we got some pretty positive news that Commander Burmaster had been working on a grant and we received, the village received a grant of $57,000 for our expenses of body cameras and that prompted maybe a reconsideration. And so, we've learned a lot more since I first said no to this and I thought it was worthwhile to reconsider. I've reconsidered and it's my recommendation we move forward, but I wanted Chris to come and kind of share with the board what it is and then you can decide for yourself if we should move forward.
Thank you, Chief. Good evening. Back in January 2023, we renegotiated our contract with Axon for new squad cameras and we got those installed and they came with a feature called Axon Respond. And that feature, that software allows us to use GPS monitoring and live streaming capabilities for deployed cameras. And so, we could see, essentially, we could see exactly where our squad cars were and what they were recording in real time. Now, we were careful, as the chief mentioned, we were careful in rolling out this feature, but we have already had some success with it. To give you a quick story, in the early hours, one morning, around 5:00 in the morning, we had a hit-and-run crash and a nearby officer located the suspect vehicle. And his last radio traffic was that he was attempting a traffic stop on the vehicle and it was occupied by three subjects and that one of the subjects was jumping out of the car and running away. The, what we didn't realize was that officer had just worked an extended shift and his radio battery died because when we checked his status, there was no response. So, that was the last thing we heard. But because of this feature, I was able to open my phone and click on his squad and bring up the video in real time and I could see that he was standing out of the vehicle, waving, the suspect was walking back and complying and everything was okay. This information put myself, dispatch, and his other officers at ease. Now, this technology is also available in the body cameras we purchased in the summer of 2023 and finally got at the end of 2023. So, we've had these body cameras for about six months. If we activate this software, we'll be able to see, the officers and the supervisors will be able to see other officers' precise location and supervisors will be able to live stream the body cam feed just the same as the squad car. This will substantially improve officer safety and after speaking with officers, testing it with the squad cameras, we're all in agreement that this is something that we should get behind. The cost is $36,000 over 43 months. For fiscal year '25, it's $11,736.86 and about $8,000 every year after that. Do you guys have any questions?
Questions from the board?
Let me emphasize the grant that we received. So, this was not budgeted and that's really probably an oversight on my part. We just weren't rethinking this in October when we were planning our budget, but the grant we received was for $53,000, $57,000.
Yeah, so when we got our new squad cameras, we put in for a grant, we got reimbursed for one grant. Those funds helped offset the cost for the new body cameras and we just received a grant of $57,000 for those body cameras.
So, that, those funds were not budgeted either and that's why I thought I would reapproach the board to see if there's an appetite for this.
I would tell you definitely there's an appetite for this.
Yeah, this is, this to me is, you know, a significant upgrade in terms of both officer safety and public safety. So, I don't see this as being anything but a win-win situation.
So, Commander Burmaster mentioned this. I want to share with you that, you know, using a technology like this with employees has to be done thoughtfully and carefully and Deputy Chief Selak, Commander Burmaster, Deputy Chief Halliobet and others have been engaged with the employee union and the officers to make sure that the policy and the protocols going forward are done smartly. So, no one should think that we're just turning on someone's camera and watching what's going on remotely willy-nilly. This is really an officer safety feature. As the story Chris mentioned, if we lose contact with an officer, this actually, and there's places where we go, like the mall, where we frequently lose contact with our, with our radio communications because of the way the system works. This is a backup communication because once they activate this feature, one officer could talk to another officer or supervisor can talk to an officer through the body camera. There's actually a cell phone chip in these cameras that's being activated. That's what we're paying for is another cell connection for an officer to have on their body, so. Any questions?
Oh, yeah, just two. So, this is using existing cameras and just adding on the software?
This is turning a feature on that's already built into the existing hardware.
Do we own the cameras or are they like leased?
We own the cameras. And a big part of the expense that we pay for every year is the backside, the web connection and the storage of, you can just imagine, you're talking video and audio of every traffic stop, every police encounter. If it's a law enforcement encounter, there's a lot, and we have to, we have to keep that for a minimum of 90 days. Many times we have to keep it two years or indefinitely if it's connected to an investigation.
So, quick question. So, then the communication through the camera, it's another cell connection, is that conversation then recorded on the camera or is it not preserved or how does that, how does that portion work? Because like, right now, it's like, if I understand, like, it's, you record audio and video, right? And then, like, if you get to a traffic stop, you turn it on to start the recording because it constantly records over itself until you actually activate it, right? Is that how that works? And then, but now, and then it records and then you preserve it based on, so the question is the audio that's being transferred, like, if you're communicating from a remote site to this officer through that camera, does that get recorded too?
Yeah, so the only time you can, you would be able to talk through the cameras is if it was active and recording. So, GPS will work all the time and it'll always be in a buffering mode, but the streaming and the peer-to-peer contact, the camera has to be activated and on.
And so, the incoming call, let's say, that's, if it's activated, that'll get recorded too?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. It's just more of a curiosity kind of thing.
No, of course, and you raise a good point. These cameras, when they are on, when an officer is wearing on the uniform and they're out and about, they are constantly buffering video only, not audio. And when the officer presses to activate it, it then captures the previous 30 seconds of video and starts the audio immediately. So, good questions. So, our request would be to authorize the non-budgeted amount of, well, what's 3414 plus 83, 22?
It's $11,736.86.
In the 2024-2025 budget.
So, say that again, because there's this number of the 36,000 in the ordinance, 36,704.36.
Right, you're actually approving the, us entering into a contract for the total amount of $36,704.36. That is, that is what the ordinance calls for.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
I wanted to ask Commander Burmaster, you said that the officer in that vignette that you mentioned, what part of his communications, what had died? Which battery was that?
It was his radio battery. So, we typically work 12-hour shifts. Sometimes because of manpower issues or other events, they can go as long as 18 hours. And it was a lesson for the officer, he should have changed his battery out, but it was close to the end of his shift and it unfortunately, it was, something came out and that happened.
But do you carry extra batteries with you to switch out while you're on?
Supervisors do in case of emergency situations, but typically not in the car.
You'd think that that'd be something that you might want to do for those longer shifts just to make sure because that could be very serious, you would think that if, at the end of the shift, lose communication.
Yep, you're absolutely right.
So, what's, so normally, what's the annual fee that we pay for the cameras? And so, is this on top of it or is this all?
This is new money.
So, what would you say is the normal?
Here's how I could break it down for you. What we spend for the entire program of our 14 mobile video camera systems, our 44 body cameras and all of the technology, the licensing, the redaction software, the ability to have our prosecutors pull this up in court, all of that, we spend roughly currently about $1,500 a month per officer for that system. This will add roughly $200 a month, so we'll be going up to about $1,700 a month per officer. I'm sorry, a year. Did I say a month? Let me, let me correct this, yeah. The whole system, all in, and I could share some, the contract numbers that have already been approved, but I break it down this way. It costs us as a village $1,500 a year per officer to have the whole system. This is going to add about $200 a year per officer. We'll be up to about $1,695 a year per officer if you add everything, everything in. So, our contract that we signed in October 2022 through January of 2028 was actually a $284,000 contract for the vehicles, the storage, the system, everything. We bought, we bought the body cameras in October 2023 for $45,000. So, if you add that all together, calculate it over the term of the contract, it's costing us, it will now, if you approve this, about $1,695 per year, per officer to have all of this technology on their person and in the cars.
Okay. Any other comments, questions regarding this? Okay, then is there a motion to approve ordinance 2024-074 in an amount of $36,704.36?
So made.
Second.
And that's also waiving competitive bidding on it?
Yep.
We have a motion second. Comments, questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
Trustee Markarth.
Aye.
President Byrne. Chairman Pro Tem Cook.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item is approval and passage of Resolution 2024-014, a resolution granting approval of an outdoor special event at Hawthorne Mall. Director Jennings?
Thank you. Representatives of Hawthorne Mall have submitted a special event application for a one-day event celebrating Pride Month is June 15, 2024. It would be in the Plaza in Green area to the west of Hawthorne Row. Oh, we have a slide somewhere. It would be in the Plaza in Green area to the west of Hawthorne Row. The, there is an image in your packet that shows how the event would be laid out. The representatives of the event, James Reese, Jennifer Tessendorf, you're welcome to come up and describe the event to the board, please.
Hi, everyone. My name's James. I'm the Business Development and Marketing Coordinator for Hawthorne. So, just to go over the event, so you've seen what we were able to do last year for our 50th celebration. So, we were trying to activate the green space and Hawthorne Row. So, I thought, you know, as it being a first time for Vernon Hills to celebrate pride, we can do it at Hawthorne at a green space. So, the event will include food truck vendors, we'll have some LGBT QIA-plus vendors as well, some resource tables for them, and then we'll also have some performances, which will include musicians, DJ, et cetera, with some other fun activities like a photo booth. Do you guys have any other questions on what the event entails?
Questions from the board because seriously, this is one of the things we looked forward to when we were doing the, all the redesigning was that this space would be utilized like this and created to have events here. So, this is going right in line with what we envisioned right from day one with the remodeling, so.
Yeah, and I think it's an amazing opportunity since Vernon Hills doesn't have a set downtown location.
Yeah.
So, I think it's just perfect to be able to represent that with different events throughout the year.
Other comments or questions from the board? Okay. Then is there a motion to approve Resolution 2024-014?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second. There are no other comments or questions. Roll call, please.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
Trustee Markarth.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tem Cook.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, no other new business, communications. I had one thing to share. Assistant Manager Petrello and I, along with Mike Storto, were at the Everly the other day for a little sort of fireside chat with a number of the residents there and they had some really great questions and it was some good back and forth and they were very complimentary of what we're doing here in town and had some interesting suggestions and that, so we enjoyed it. Mr. Petrello?
Absolutely. So, thank you for joining us. So, as the board knows, not only do we have a senior organization downstairs that we host, we have five senior living facilities in town and each of them will reach out to the board and, or reach out to staff and request, you know, a visit from a board member and staff. So, we appreciate you joining us. We do this every month. It rotates. In previous months, we've been obviously at the Victory Center where Dr. Oppenheim and Trustee Cook joined us a couple of months ago when we had the Centenarians' birthday. But every month, we go to one of them. So, an open invitation to all to join us. This happened to be the Everly now getting into the mix while they're not a, you know, I would say a full-service facility where they, they have, you know, this captured audience that's more active there. They still want to be part of the senior outreach engagement and it was an awesome day to go out there and just do a dry, I would say, a second run of the Ask the Mayor programming and they were very appreciative of it. And as Trustee Cook said, they were very complimentary of all the programs and events going on in the village and just want to be more, I'd say, a bigger part of it. So, it was just a great moment. So, thanks for joining us.
Any other communications? Okay, if there's nothing, then I want to take a motion to adjourn the board and go to committee of the whole.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. We are adjourned and we'll go right to committee of the whole. And if we're done with whatever you were here for, feel free to, just like with the veterans and stuff, we won't make you stay if you don't have to.
Okay, I'd like to call the committee of the whole meeting to order. Is there a motion to appoint Trustee Cook, President Pro Tem, or the committee of the whole?
I'd like to nominate, I'd like to nominate Trustee Cook to be President Pro Tem for the Dresch in the meeting.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
Trustee Markarth.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Cook.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion.
Yep, okay. Approval of the committee of the whole meeting minutes of May 7, 2024. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments, questions, corrections, additions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Markarth.
Aye.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tem Cook.
Aye. Motion carries. Aye. Motion carries. First item is Waterway Self-Service Vacuums, 860 South Milwaukee Avenue. Discussion of modification to the site plan. Director Jennings?
Thank you. Waterway, which is located at 860 South Milwaukee, was originally approved in 2003 for a special use. A special use that was subsequently revised in 2019. At this time, Waterway is requesting approval of self-service vacuums in a few seldom-used parking spaces that are farther away from the main entrance to the building, sort of up to the north, near the, the kiosk where you would go into the, to the wash area. So with that, Mike Goldman from Waterway is here. I'd like to have him come forward and describe the request. While, while he's coming up, I would just point out that we, we did speak with Mr. Goldman in preparation for this regarding the, the location of the, the blower equipment for the vacuums and did confirm that it is all existing equipment located indoors. So no additional noise is, is anticipated with this. So with that, Mr. Goldman.
Good evening. I'm Mike Goldman, Vice President, General Counsel, Waterway Gas and Wash. And our proposal is pretty simple. As people have probably seen in other car washes around Chicago and everywhere around the country, there has been a trend of allowing customers who choose to, to vacuum their own cars as part of their, as part of their car wash package, rather than have us do the work. And so we're just responding to customer requests and we've, we have added free vacuums at locations around the country. Does not mean that we aren't still a full-service car wash. In fact, that's, that's our bread and butter. We want to, we want to, we want to vacuum, we want to do your windows, but really, really spiked during COVID where people didn't want other people in their car necessarily, where they said, well, I'm just going to do this myself. And some people like it. So we just wanted to give them that option. We're taking the five spaces. We are, if anything, overparked. Our convenience store is not the same as it had been under, when it was under the Peacock brand. We aren't, we don't do that kind of volume. We have a different, a different economic plan with, with the Waterway versus with Peacock. So we never, parking has never been an issue. Obviously, someone could still park in these spaces to vacuum their, after they vacuum their car, or not vacuum their car, go in and grab a drink or whatever. But fairly simple and just happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the board. Trustee Schenk?
Did you say that there, I don't know if you said it or not, is it a pay-to-use vacuum?
No, it's free for customers who've gotten their car washed.
Who got in their car? Are you eliminating some of the vacuuming and finishing at the, your employees?
No, I mean, it's additive.
So, so that, that situation, that'll stay what it is now?
That will stay exactly.
So you're adding?
I'm a little confused. Director Jennings, you said that there was something that was inside before that moved outside?
Mr. Goldman may be able to explain better.
So the business end of the vacuum, what causes the, the condenser? These will be attached, yeah, these will still be attached to the same condensers. And so, I mean, I, it's, there will be that small sound of a vacuum, you know, that makes a little tiny bit of sucking dirt, but it's, it's almost impossible to hear from any more than about 10 or 15 feet away at the most.
So the main motor, the main pressure?
The main motor, all that still remains inside the, inside the main building, yeah. We just throw some underground lines.
Okay. I was wondering how that, sounds like that would have been really expensive to
Yeah, no, we're just
deadlines after the fact, you?
It's, well, we've, we've done it at a bunch of stores. It's not a small deal, but we've done it a bunch. We'll actually go around the front of the store, trench it out, and then it'll be a, we'll have a mess for about a week.
Okay.
Other comments, questions from the board? Action you're requesting this evening is?
Direction to prepare an ordinance for, for this minor amendment to their special use.
Okay. Is there a motion to that effect?
Do we need a motion, or is just?
Consensus is added.
What's that?
Consensus is added.
Just consensus? Okay.
Sounds good to me.
Everybody?
Good.
Okay. Mayor, anything you want to add? Nope, it's not. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next item is discussion of an outdoor special event for FunBox to operate a bounce park at Hawthorne Mall. Director Jennings?
Thank you. The village has received a application for a special event at Hawthorne Mall in the parking area to the northwest of Sleep Number. Mr. Tavang Khatari, if I got that right, you can correct me when you come up, has, is representing FunBox. The reason this has been placed as a discussion item on the committee of the whole prior to just preparing a resolution is the duration of the event. It does take up a fairly large area within the parking area and, and it extends from June, end of June, I believe, through mid-August, correct? So we wanted to make sure that we had ample time to discuss this with the committee before preparing a resolution in this case. So with that, if you could describe the event?
Sure. We are an outdoor bounce park. We
And you are, go ahead and say your name.
Sorry, my name is Tavang Khatari and I am the franchisee and the owner of FunBox in the Chicago market. We are a 25,000-square-foot bounce park. We are the world's largest bounce park. It's a concept that started in California and is going around all over the country. It's basically just a family-friendly event outdoors, you know, especially during the nice months that we have, nice weather here in Chicago, for parents to bring their kids out, bounce in, in these parks where we have a big bounce park. We have slides, we have a big temple that they climb up to, very kid-friendly and something just for parents to come out and have fun with their, with their kids.
Okay.
I'm happy to address any questions.
Comments or questions from the board? I know one I had was, had to do with the frequency, if it is going to be open this long, the frequency of inspection and, and who's doing those inspections? Because unfortunately, this kind of a equipment has been in the news several times recently and it's never a good thing.
Yeah. I mean, just to give you a little bit of background, this is an event that we did at Old Orchard Mall last year in, in Skokie. We are currently doing it in South Lake Mall in Indiana and Fox Valley Mall in Aurora. We're also planning to go back to Old Orchard in Skokie. We normally operate, I know in, in the permit, we ask for the flexibility to operate throughout the week, but typically, more typically, we operate Saturdays and Sundays and Friday evenings. During the summer months, when kids are out of school, we just wanted some flexibility in case demand exceeds what our capacity is to add an additional day during the weekdays. We do anchor everything. Typically, what happens with inflatables and when they are in the news is because they haven't been anchored down properly. And so the wind catches an inflatable and puts it up. That is something that we inspect thoroughly. We also get inspected by the Illinois Department of Labor that monitors these amusement rides to make sure that we are safe and sound. On a daily basis, we have our managers do a pre-opening inspection to make sure that everything is safe and, you know, is, is correctly monitored.
And the state, how, how often does the state?
The state does an inspection once a year. They come out, do the inflatable inspection, make sure it's done correctly and make sure that they're safe.
Other questions from the board?
So I have a few. So June 28 through August 11, you only want permission for the weekends and possibly an additional day? Are you asking for every day?
No. So typically, the way we operate is we operate Saturdays, Sundays, and Friday evenings. During the summer months, sometimes we have more demand than the sessions that we have open. So we just ask for the flexibility to add a weekday and that's why the permit is for requesting a longer period of time. So we have that flexibility. But typically, we definitely will not operate throughout the entire week. We may add another weekday.
So your max capacity is 400. You take reservations then? Is it an online thing?
Right. We do a combination of online bookings as well as walk-ups. Most of our, probably about 80% of our tickets are sold online. About 20% come see, see the bounce park and walk in.
Where's the generator?
The generator is actually in the back of the, if, if we go back to the site map, I can point it out. It would be where that cross is, I think, I believe that is the generator.
The bottom right?
Yeah, bottom right.
Okay. So this is off 60, right? Andrew?
It is, so that's the
That's the ring room. But it's set inside off 60.
It's inside the fence line. Yeah, the yellow, yellow is the fence line. So we do have a fence line.
What does that fence look like?
That fence is typically a panel fence, but we do put a mesh around it. That's a FunBox branded mesh that
Brand it all the way around?
Yeah.
And how high is the fence?
Typically, six feet.
And is there security on there at night, or no?
We haven't had the need for it. We, we've operated at multiple locations and we really haven't had an issue.
And they deflate at night, then inflate during the, so they can be deflated for like Monday through Friday, essentially?
That's correct. Anytime we're not operating
And there's nobody there for those five days, correct?
Typically not, no.
Assuming there's?
There is mall security, I believe, but we, we haven't had the need for security when, when we're not in operation.
So when, when they're deflated, are they put into the storage area, or they just, they're just flat?
Yeah, they're just flat. So we turn off the, we turn off the power to it. The blowers that blow air into the inflatables stop blowing air and they just
How big is the generator?
The generator typically 150 kilowatt.
Do you, height-wise, would you say?
Height-wise, it's about, don't quote me exactly, probably about six feet, six to eight feet.
And, and I wrote a note here, what's your method of anchoring?
We use something called PE-10. They're anchors that are used by American Earth is the manufacturer. They're 10-inch anchors that go into the ground. They can hold up to, per anchor, they can hold up to 1,500 pounds of pull. And we typically do about, you know, 15 to 16 anchors throughout the bounce park and different anchors throughout the obstacle course to make sure that everything stays.
So I'm trying to read, oh, thank you, David. I'm trying to look at your legend here. I'm trying to figure out this big yellow square. What is that?
The big yellow square is, is a piece that's called what we call Mushroom Mountain. It's, it's an attraction that's connected to the park. The reason it's separated is because based on the layout, we have the flexibility to either put it behind like it is right there, or to put it off to one of the sides.
How high is that?
That is about six feet. It's something that people, that kids climb up to. So it's actually, it's sloped up, so kids kind of climb up the Mushroom Mountain. And then once they're on top of it, it's, you know, they can jump around there.
Why not on the other side of the mall? Is there not space?
I think Hawthorne Mall is, we actually explored three or four different site options with Hawthorne Mall. I understand that they're going through a redevelopment process and a construction process. So it's somewhat based on the availability of the space that they have available.
I'm not really feeling that, from my position, this, this area for that long of a time to have it there.
I would assume they put it there because of the, the fact that you're, you're not, that's their parking lot, the other, right? You know, similar things on the north side would be part of the parking for pennies and part of the parking for
When it's deflated, is this going to be this eyesore of color?
Well, that's what, that's why I was going to ask you, your fence, is your fence?
I, I just, yeah, I just wanted to clarify that. When it is deflated, and we can, we're happy to show you pictures of what our fence and the mesh around it looks like. It is a very aesthetically, at least, I'm a little partial, obviously, but it, it is aesthetically pleasing. We do have a branded mesh that goes around it.
Is that pretty much opaque, or is that?
It's, it's not completely blocks everything out, but it's opaque, yeah.
It's going to be like all your advertising on there, right?
It, it has our branding.
Branding all around, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to see what that looks like.
Yeah, we're, yeah, I don't know if we have a picture of that, but you can see it kind of right off on the side there on the fence, but we can, we can get you better pictures.
So on the entrance, you have the temporary chain-link fence. Is that the fencing that you use and then put your branding on the chain-link fence?
Yes.
So it's going to be a chain-link fence all the way around, kind of like a construction site?
Right, very much so, yes.
But with your branding on the inside is going to be?
Yeah. The, the branding covers up the chain-link fence, so, you know, people can't see what's, you know, going on inside as much. And it doesn't, we, we've typically, we have received that kind of feedback that, you know, is this, what's this going to look like when it's deflated? Is it going to be something that, it's going to look like a construction site? And that's exactly why we came up with this mesh branding.
So I'm just going to say this from my position, you know, we are obviously trying to attract permanent-type businesses. And some businesses that we're trying to attract may not want to know, if they know that they're coming to an area that more of a carnival-type atmosphere, I'm just kind of calling it what I believe it looks like for that long of a time. They may not, they may feel like that's not the kind of area that they want to be in, you know. It's, it's sure, it's, you know, it's like a great-looking product and kids will probably have fun in it, but it's just the impression of, you know, when the carnival comes to town, you know, and for, forgive me, six weeks?
I mean, I think we have a total of six weeks that we're operating.
Six weeks? That's pretty extensive. So maybe on the other side of the mall, but I understand you want the visibility.
Yeah. And I think because of the redevelopment, that, that was also, we were working with Hawthorne Mall's schedule around
If I could interject on that point, there's actually the two locations that we had received on the original application. One is going to be occupied in, in some of that time period by the Bear Straining Camp parking. And then the other one is, the surface is not in good condition because it's been used for construction staging. So there were two slightly less prominent locations considered before the mall and FunBox arrived at this one.
AMC parking lot? Just curious?
AMC is full. When, when they, we just drove by the other day, it was full.
Well, that's good.
That's very good. Now, JCPenney lot isn't, but is the
When is Vernon Hills days? The, is that mid-July?
And the other thing I did want to clarify, because we, we do get lumped in with carnivals a lot. Operationally, we're very different than a carnival. We don't operate after, you know, after the sun comes down. We're not operating in the dark. We're only operating during the day. Everybody that comes into our events are paid entrants. So we don't have every, people coming in free and then kind of loitering around. We are session-based, so our sessions are 90 minutes apart. They're 80-minute sessions, so we have 10 minutes to clean and get everything ready for the next session. So it doesn't create that same kind of, it's a little bit of a different environment than a carnival because it's mostly just families and, you know, parents and kids that are coming in versus, you know, carnivals have a little different demographic.
How many employees will you have working at a time?
We would probably have close to 20.
Working at, at a time during each session?
Yeah, during any one session, probably between 12 to 15.
Okay. So each one of them will have to clean their, their particular apparatus?
And, and general cleaning of the guest area and kind of the member area. We, we do sell snow cones, so, you know, creates a little bit of trash that we have to just clean.
Is that the only food you sell?
We, yeah, snow cones and bottled water.
And how long are the sessions?
It's, the session is 80 minutes and they're ran 90 minutes apart, so that we have those 10 minutes to clean up.
Well, you said you're generally Friday through Sunday.
Right.
What other day would you want?
If demand exceeds what our capacity is, then we'd probably want to add Thursday.
Because they, you know, because the paperwork here says Monday through, it says seven days a week.
Yeah, we just ask for maximum flexibility, but we, we don't really need it. We, you know, we could modify the application.
Thursday to Sunday?
Thursdays to Sunday, yeah. We can certainly do that. That's not a problem.
How's your insurance liability?
We have $2 million in occurrence and $3 million aggregate. So we work with mostly, we work, work with large mall owners, Simon and Westfield and, and, you know, obviously, the insurance is a concern for them as well.
Do the mall look for you, or do you look for them?
It's been a combination. What's been happening in the mall space is that, you know, obviously, traditional brick-and-mortar retail
We know, you know, but I was just wondering, do they, do they solicit you, or do you solicit?
Hawthorne Mall has solicited, Hawthorne Mall, Jennifer, actually, who was here today, reached out to me about a year ago, when we were in, when we were in Old Orchard. And we weren't coming back. when we were in, when we were in Old Orchard, uh, and we weren't coming back until this summer, obviously, so.
And you've read the list of suggestions that are in the ordinance, like the fact that you're gonna have to submit a list of employees and?
Absolutely, yes. And we, we actually, as part of the Department of Labor Regulations, we do background checks on all of our, our employees.
Any comments from staff on this or?
Just based on the discussion, I would suggest if, if it is the consensus to bring this back as a voting resolution, modifying the hours of operation to reflect, um, Friday through Sunday with the flexibility to add Thursday on demand. Um, I would add the six-foot branded perimeter fence. And then I, I think a reference to the session, the, the way that the sessions are, are held, the 80/10 to allow, uh, for pre-sale, um, some amount of walk-ups and then the cleaning period. So I think those things that came out during discussion should be reflected in this.
How much, how much of the fence is actually branded? Is it every 10 feet that there, that has your logo? Is it continuous the whole way around?
It's, it's continuous. The only place we don't brand is, uh, panels that our vendors require for servicing. So, you know, the bathroom vendors, the people that fuel the generators, stuff like that, they come in. Uh, so they, they have a gate, so that probably one panel that we don't brand. But other than that, we brand the entire fence, the entire perimeter.
Mayor, do you have any comments on this, sir? Don't think so. Okay.
Could that be modified or that's already purchased, the, the?
The branding? The branded mesh? Certainly could. I mean, if, are you suggesting branding less of the fence?
Just so it doesn't look like one huge, what's, what's the total perimeter?
Uh, it's, it's about 1,000 feet around of the, the fence is about 1,000 feet.
We, we limit our signage to a certain amount on the side of a building and you got-
The most, the most comparable thing we have are, uh, construction signs worked into the perimeter construction fencing. And we've tried to keep a practice of two panels per side, uh, for construction fencing.
Right, not like every three feet.
Not all the way around.
Not all the way around saying which company.
How would, how would we restrict that in this?
Uh, I, I would leave that to the, to the applicant to, to figure out. If you're able, if you're able to produce panels that are not branded and you could, you could comply with having a few per side, we could certainly-
Cause we'd rather not have a 800 or 900 foot sign.
No, I, I understand and certainly that's something we can do. We could do a non-branded mesh, uh, for, uh-
I mean, you could have a few-
Right, I understand.
Or like one or two per side if they're small enough or whatever, but just not-
Sure, yeah.
Doesn't need to be in our face, the name of the company.
I will, I will tell you, we, we did have, um, and it's anecdotal, but, uh, we had gone to Orlando and they had the same concern. And so we had, uh, uh, put up our mesh and they said, well, you can't have this branded mesh here. We want you to take it down. We want you to put on, uh, generic, uh, mesh. And we started doing that, got halfway through it and they came back and they said, you know, that mesh looked really nice. Do you think you guys can put that one back? And we said, okay, we can put that one back, but, uh, certainly doesn't necessarily apply here. Doesn't necessarily apply here, but just something anecdotal, so.
Well, did you use a different material or was it a different color for the?
I think it's the color, it's the, it's the kids' kind of lively kind of color that they really liked. Um, they, they liked the aesthetics of it. I don't, I don't think there was anything necessarily with the material that they liked, but just the aesthetics of it.
Is, is, the branding stuff is, I mean, we're seeing very little, is, is what you're talking about, what we see right here?
It's, you see just a portion of it on the left, on the left end of the fence, but that's something that we can certainly add to the application.
Yeah, I don't wanna see that all the way around, no, no.
Yeah, okay, yeah, we could, we can certainly do something that's more generic. And then, uh, keep just a couple of panels with, with the branded mesh.
Other comments or questions?
Tom?
Yes, I could just, uh, I may have missed it, but what's the age restrictions on the use of this?
We, we don't have age restrictions. It's actually, we actually encourage adults to go in with their, with their children and it's something that can be applicable to all ages. Uh, what, what we do restrict is under two. Uh, we don't, we, we don't charge them for it and we don't think that unaccompanied under two is, is very safe. And then we restrict pregnant people from jumping into bounce park.
So, so you're gonna have four-year-olds with 18-year-olds at the same time?
Yes, it's actually, there are no hard spaces. Typically, we don't see teenagers coming in.
The hard space is the head hitting the other head.
Right, no, I mean, yes, the, the bounce park itself has no hard spaces when you compare it to like trampoline parks or some things like that. But typically teenagers are a little bit too cool for this. It tends to be skewed towards younger children, um, that, that are more interested in it. It is something that we've done kind of across the country and we've had very few injuries. Uh, not, no, you know, knock on wood, no major injuries and, um, you know, um, just minor scrapes and bruises.
Any comments or concerns from staff other than what we've heard?
Will you be signing a lease with Centennial for this use of the property?
Yes.
I, I think, um, if, if, if the committee would be okay, we could draft this to come back as a, as a resolution, including the comments that have been, uh, that came from the discussion. But if that, if there's a, uh, if we need additional discussion, we could also bring it back with, with the, um, we could put it on new business, for example, the next time and allow for discussion again.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to, if, you know, there's any interest in visiting an existing site to get a feel for what this looks like and is it really safe? Is it really something that, uh, you'd like to have in the village? I'm happy to coordinate a visit or-
Where did you say you have?
We have one coming up in Old Orchard that's opening, uh, this weekend.
This weekend at Old Orchard?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think in the time being, staff can reach out to our colleagues in Skokie and Aurora to talk about their experiences at Fox Valley and Old Orchard.
Yeah, certainly. And we, we are gonna, uh, we're doing it in New Yorktown as well. That's the plan, so, yeah.
Can I ask again about the location of this? The JCPenney parking lot was not proposed because Centennial doesn't own that or?
They, they do not own, um, I don't have the parcel map for it, but no, they don't own, uh, uh, much in that corner.
Yeah, most of that backside is either Penny or Macy's owned, right? Correct? Most of that-
Penny's goes like this, it's Lakers old. It's probably, actually, if you look at it on this drawing, you could see it, but.
I think the anchor stores own their own parking fields.
Yeah.
Macy's.
I think it's just Macy's and Penny's now, right?
But, but the, but the north side of the mall is, that's more predominant of left than was the south side. And this is part of the area that Centennial did own and bought more when they-
They bought Sears and-
Yeah, when they bought Sears and bought Carson, yeah.
Which one's Penny's?
Well, I'm just wondering if, is it that?
So this is the mall?
That the mall wants the lease revenue and that's why they specifically chose this? Or just that they didn't have control? I'm just wondering if we could ask them to, to look into one of the other lots perhaps?
Well, I would think from a business standpoint, you'd also would actually like the visibility from Route 60.
Well, we're, we're looking at it from both sides. He would like it, he would not.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
So.
I'm saying the other side of the, yeah, no, yeah.
Yeah, right, right. I understand. He wants that, but, but I'm just saying, is, is there still the possibility that we could ask the petitioner to investigate the Penny's lot instead? The mall might not be happy with it, but, but if he wants to be there, then, I don't know if the mall, you know, cares that much or?
Don't know. It's revenue, it's revenue.
Yeah, I don't know if it's just the revenue or if they're, if they're just trying to get traffic.
Typically, our experience has been is that the revenue that we bring in is not meaningful to most malls. But what they are trying to do is they, they want to create visitor counts. They want to attract visitors to the mall.
So then the Penny's spot would be okay from that standpoint, assuming we can get them, you know, to approve it.
Maybe actually even be easier for people getting into the mall.
And I don't, I don't know if we'd be able to, if, if it's owned by Penny's, um, that may be a challenging process to get a lease, quite honestly.
You know, you got an inflatable, we have an inflatable place and, well, the mall has an inflatable place inside the mall, the franchise. Remember when she came in? I mean, it's only six weeks, but it's, I mean, the, the summer though is for the, you know, the kids are home in the summer, more or less. The mom, parents are, parents are looking for something to do. I guarantee you, they do probably very well, very good business in the summer.
What has the mall said and, and, I'm surprised we haven't heard somebody, I mean, directly, if I would-
It's like turning at the chicken tender con-
The mall, the folks from the mall who were representing, uh, the, the mall on this matter were here earlier, but-
Yeah, and that-
Well, they, they asked me if I needed their help and I didn't believe I did, so.
They don't err.
Never assume.
So.
Have you ever looked indoor, you know, you have a lot of these big box or warehouse spaces that are now open that are just sitting? Have you ever looked, worked with?
Yeah, Funbox has an indoor concept as well, yeah. So we, we, we have, we are exploring the indoor concept.
Exploring it in Vernon Hills by any chance?
Perhaps, yeah. We, we haven't started yet. It's, uh, they started with the outdoor franchising, the outdoor concept first and now they're franchising the indoor concept, but we're-
This didn't pass hypothetically. I'm, I, I only speak from my position, right? Hypothetically, would you then explore an indoor concept?
Absolutely.
In Vernon Hills?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Interestingly enough-
And then it's like you can run it?
You run.
Yeah, yeah, ab, there is, there is the indoor, um, concept. What's attractive about this concept being outdoors is specifically for the summer months. And it's, it's when parents want to be out with their kids. And we get heights with this concept that you can't really get with indoor because of ceiling heights and restrictions that you have. Originally Funbox started as an indoor bounce park. And this was actually something that they experimented with during COVID when there were capacity restrictions. So they actually went out into the parking lot to see and it was, it was a, a big hit. And that's kind of how it, that was the genesis of the outdoor concept.
I'm kind of surprised that there's no restriction, restrictive covenant for the, the indoor bounce park. Maybe they, maybe they have one already at the mall. As long as this one isn't indoors, then it's not violating that, but you'd kind of think-
Well, that's a question we can check with the mall on.
Kind of think that they would have, well, they would have allowed him to present if that were, uh-
The owner who has it indoors.
I mean, is that really something, I'm sure going forward?
Yeah, and I'd also like to come back and hear the research, you know, that we get from other-
So what's tonight? Consent or what? How does it?
We've got direction to do, do some additional research, bring it back. Um, we can discuss as a staff if, uh, placing it on new business and presenting that additional research would make sense.
Putting it back on new business?
Yeah, to bring it as new business so that there's an opportunity to discuss what we bring back.
Okay. Everybody, Mike, you good with?
I'm good with that.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I mean, it's-
All right. Calm, so you want to let them know this, although we're letting them come back, it doesn't mean-
It's gotta come back to get discussed anyway, so there's no consent.
Are you talking about comeback committee whole or to the? To the village board. Yeah, the next step would be, um, additional research and you appear before the village board with a resolution for a final vote. Tonight was not a decision, not an approval, just, it's a direction to look into this further.
Yeah, and I, again, I would welcome the opportunity to show you an actual park, uh, that's in operation. So I know sometimes it's, you know, diagrams are one thing, seeing it live is-
What are the days and hours at Old Orchard?
Uh, we're doing Saturdays, Sundays and Friday evenings.
And that opens this coming weekend?
This coming weekend, yes.
Light it or no?
What's that?
Light it?
Not light it, because we don't, we don't operate during- Mall lighting, yes. Mall lighting and then mall, mall security.
Sir, would you mind asking where it's located at Old Orchard? Just kind of curious, what part of that property?
Yeah, it's, uh, if you know where the Bloomingdale's lot is, uh, where the old Bloomingdale's was in Old Orchard, right on, um, what road is that? Um, um, Old Orchard Road, right on Old Orchard Road. It's right in the parking lot of the Bloomingdale, so. Okay. It would be on the west side.
So off Main Road where that open parking lot is?
Yeah.
Off, next to Niles North High School?
Uh, no, not, not back. So if you go, if you go down Old Orchard Road, you take a left. Uh, it's not, it's right off of Old Orchard Road. It's, um, where the Cheesecake Factory is, kind of in front of the Cheesecake Factory, the Barnes and Noble is there.
So not on that other larger open lot that's?
Yeah, no, no, it's, it's more up front, right, right, right off Old Orchard Road, actually.
Living not too far from Old Orchard, Andrew has agreed to visit the site this weekend and take pictures and videos and try every, every ride.
Two-sentence pass, please.
Put yourself out there.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Board. Thank you, Chris.
So you're, you're even on, you're on Google Maps already for Skokie there, Funbox, Chicago.
Actually, it's on, if you go on Google Earth, they actually got a satellite image when the bounce park was inflated. So it's kind of an interesting, yeah.
Yeah, not a satellite, but, perfect, all right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, last item on the regular, on this agenda is a discussion of hotel and motel license regulations. Proposed amendment to Chapter 10 of the Village Code. Director Jennings?
Thank you. Uh, this is a joint effort of community development and the police department. So I'll give you a quick intro and then, uh, hand it over to the chief to give you some of the background information. So community development and the police have been, uh, working together with the village attorney, uh, to draft hotel and motel license regulations. Right now, as it stands in our business license section of the code, uh, hotel and motel licensing exists only as a licensed class with no regulations attached to it. So if you look through that section of the code, there are a few different types of license, uh, licenses that have, uh, some requirements attached to them. Tobacco sales, for instance, has its own set of regulations that you have to comply with. Massage has, uh, regulations that have to be complied with to maintain that license in good standing. So, uh, we had, uh, observed, and the police will, uh, attest to this in a moment, observed a need to, uh, to insert some regulations into Chapter 10, uh, to attach to the hotel most, uh, motel license. With that, what I'd like to do is go ahead and hand it over to, uh, the chief and give you some of the background as to why we are here.
Thank, thank you, Andrew. So basically, uh, this is, uh, observations since the pandemic that, uh, really, for whatever reason, uh, conditions have changed. And we find ourselves responding to, um, our two extended stay hotels for police calls at a much higher frequency than we ever did in the past. And using the two traditional hotels as kind of a control, a much higher frequency than those hotels generate, where, where, where guests might need, uh, police, uh, or fire service. And so, um, you know, essentially, when we started diving into this, I'd, I'd heard these, um, calls on the radio and, and seen briefings on these, but when we really started doing, um, the numbers, what we found is that, um, a large number of the calls are associated with, um, people that have established residency, um, for many months on end sometimes, um, at these two hotels. And, um, I didn't know if that was the intention of the village board when these hotels were developed in, in town to, uh, become, uh, what we've learned is it's kind of a default, inexpensive apartment living, um, at the rates, uh, that, that they're, they're charging. And, um, we, some of, some of the guests that stay for long periods of time generate repeated, uh, police calls. And, and so you've got some numbers here, you know, just, um, you know, that, those 104 calls I'm referring to, those aren't all the calls for service, but that was just associated with 21 guests. The fire departments had similar example, or reached out to both of our fire chiefs because one fire department handles, uh, the Woodlands location and one handles the location on, um, Milwaukee. on Milwaukee. So I'm kind of putting all this in aggregate, but to further share with you the connection of sometimes long, the same long-term guests generating multiple calls for service, Countryside Fire went to 53 calls for service in 2023, 18 of them were for the same unit, for the same individual. You know, 16 of them were lift assists, and, and so just repeated calls back, and it can be quite disruptive to the other guest. So we wanted to share this experience with you. Some of these calls have been quite serious in nature, and others are more mundane, but again, not something we're seeing in the traditional hotels, and seems to be associated with a long stays. So when I raised this with Andrew, village attorney, village manager, we also looked around and found some other towns had experienced similar challenges and identified Schaumburg in particular, which is a lot more hotels, had found success in turning this around by, by establishing a 28-day stay limit for any guest at their hotels, with some exceptions. And that's what got us here to this conversation, so I think I'll turn it back over to Andrew, unless you have any questions about the, the problem statements, so to speak. I think Andrew can probably share with you some recommendations, how to go forward.
Oh, I went forward too fast. So as I had mentioned earlier, we don't currently have regulations attached to, to hotel motel licensing right now, so that is the gist of what we're proposing. As the chief mentioned, it is based on the experience of other municipalities, the Schaumburg and Gurnee codes, we borrowed heavily from those in drafting this. The meat of it is, is a creation of a definition section that includes nuisance incidents, criminal activity, occupancy restrictions are listed on the, within that nuisance definition. There are safety requirements established. One of the ones that we've been focusing on as a staff has been the installation of video surveillance system and staff ability, staff ability to have access to it if needed. The, as the chief mentioned, we are recommending a, a limit to the stay as, as it is right now. I would say in reviewing our, our current code, the zoning code, business license section, and then the Corporate Woods Regional PUD, that also plays a role on the Woodlands location, I would say the, this, the regulatory framework right now is, is pretty vague. Extended staying did not exist at the time the Corporate Woods Regional PUD was approved, so I don't think it's a surprise that it doesn't really anticipate it. The, the zoning code is also not specific in how it handles extended stay. So this business license section is, I think, probably the most appropriate way to do it. Talking to the village attorney, having a license gives some recourse to the village if somebody fails to abide by the requirements for that license. So the, the nuisance section does list as a possibility for a nuisance violation, failure to, to adhere to the regulations itself. So failure for the hotel to, to, to adhere to the 28-day stay, that, that would be considered a type of violation. So the nuisance, I, I think I have another slide that gets into that a little bit more, but one of the important points that I wanted to make here is that we've been in communication with the extended stay regional management to make sure that they're aware that this is something that we're considering. We don't, didn't want them to be surprised by it, we wanted to understand a little bit operationally how this might impact them, certainly not looking for their approval, but making sure that we consider their feedback. So we do have in this, in this recommendation, the draft here, exceptions to the 28-day stay limit, that would be caring for a family member who's in a hospital in the area, somebody who's on a verifiable work assignment, if you've been placed in temporary housing through a social service agency, or in the event of fire or natural disaster that displaces you from your home. So if needed, when reviewing the registration records with the hotel, we could certainly ask for documentation to verify that the, the 28-day exception requirements have been met as well. So any questions thus far?
Well, yeah, my understanding in, in doing some of this, and I asked chief a couple of questions, if there is somebody that is creating a problem and they've been there more than 28 days, the hotel itself also has trouble getting rid of that person, is that correct? In other words, what I'm asking is, this.
Sure.
What, what looks good about this is that it, 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 it doesn't have a hard, fast, 28 days you're done. There are exceptions, and there are ways to extend it, but at the same time, it would make it much easier to facilitate dealing with any significant problems.
I, I would agree with that. I would definitely agree with that. When, when these hotels were developed, the idea was never to have permanent residents. And with permanent residents comes life's problems, right? Ambulance runs, police calls, various things that you really don't see in a hotel, generally speaking. So this gives not only us enforcement mechanism, it gives the hotel an enforcement mechanism, if that's what you're, what you're.
Yeah, that's what I'm, rather than tying their hands, this actually, I would see it as a benefit to the hotel to be able to, you know, make, because I can't, I can't think, chief, that having somebody that's creating a disruption is, is good for the hotel.
Yeah, it, what we've heard in talking with their management is that it does generate expense and, and, and some difficulties once they establish beyond 30 days residency, now a legal eviction process has to take place. And that was some of the feedback I received from Schaumburg Police Department is that after they went through this, the feedback they've kind of gotten from their, from their hotel partners is, it's smoother to operate when you don't have to be taking on that kind of liability. So it seems to work well for them. They did that in 2022. They, again, they have a lot more hotels.
Yeah.
And they still have a vibrant hotel, you know, availability in their town.
Other comments, questions from the board?
I'm a little curious about, you said there were a high number of lift assists, meaning people had fallen down?
Yeah, so perhaps someone is staying there that really can't care for themselves and has no one to care for them, and they, they really probably need to be in a place where there's some level of assisted living. And so a lift assist is a category of a fire call where someone needs help getting back to bed is, or, or back, you know, to a chair.
So what, what would happen if that same person lived in an apartment complex instead of a hotel?
Certainly, the fire department goes to single-family homes for lift assists. I mean, it's a regular call of theirs. It's a little unusual to have such a concentration at same place. So there's typically outreach to social service providers to say what's going on, family members, to try and arrange for some assistance, because usually, when people run into that kind of care need, they have to find themselves in a place or environment with family to take care of them. It's not practical for the fire department to go to, you know, be, be the daily support for someone's needs, right?
Right, I'm just wondering, so is there a, is there a fee for someone to pay, say, if they lived in an apartment and the fire department was coming twice a week to lift them up, would?
I can't speak to that. I can say, we don't charge a fee for repeated police calls to a location, but I know there is a fee schedule for certain fire services, and I just.
Host alarms, perhaps, but for them.
More ambulance calls. Some communities do have invalid assist ordinances where there is a fee that's charged. The fire department is called out not for really a life-saving call, it's to assist somebody to get back into bed, back into a chair, and those calls happen a lot. I'm not sure if Countryside has that type of ordinance, but I, I do work with communities that have, have passed an ordinance like that, where they charge a fee for that type of a call. But, but again, that activity really should be done by caregivers, and that's, that's the issue that some of these fire departments are running into.
I'm just trying to, trying to understand why it's happening so much more at this facility versus just at some of the apartments, just the transient nature of.
I, I could, I think we have some scenarios where people are, first of all, at these locations, anyone can pay for anyone else to stay there. So you can, when you sign a agreement to, for, for extended stay, you can have a list of people, you can list that are going to stay in that unit. So oftentimes, it's set up by third party to, to live there, and it's pretty affordable. It's certainly a lot more affordable than perhaps a nursing facility or the appropriate, or, or a, a place with support needed to help someone that perhaps needs help. And, and it doesn't mean it's a, a good solution, it just means it's less expensive.
Right. So they're essentially using the fire department and the police services to provide some of those needed services that assisted living facilities would provide.
Okay. They're probably paying 1,500 a month there, and assisted living is probably about 4,000 a month.
Yep.
Or more.
Or more.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was being, yeah, and, you know, my, my concern is, you know, you're going to have, you know, we've spoken, but some of these residents need help, and.
Right.
This is where they're going, trying to just escape something, or, or feel safe and not really causing trouble, but yeah, they, they're, they have needs, you know, fire department, and I just, I'm concerned about, you know, what's going to happen to some of these.
Well, and that's.
And I don't know what the solution is.
But I think, I think this kind of takes care of that because of the fact that really all this is an effort to get rid of the, to eliminate the places where it's a, a more of a problem created by the person than what you're talking about. Is that making sense, what I'm saying?
I just think that there's people there that, yes, this, this is a way to get them moved on because they need to move on, but I think there's people, there may be people in there that don't know where else to go, and that's why I just, and they're not trying to cause trouble, they're just trying to.
But again, it, it allows if they're.
They found a solution, they found, it was maybe, was, was, was a temporary solution, slowly becoming a permanent solution because obviously there's no pressure to move on.
Right.
So I just, I just hope that there's some kind of, as we go through this implementation plan of education, I mean, I think we should notify some of the social services in the area.
To get them involved.
To get them, you know, you can't force them to be involved, but just say, this is what's happening, you know, there's, you're, they may even know that there's people here because they may have dealt with them before, because it's not, it's usually, you know, like, like what Chuck said today at our meeting, you know, it's, they go, it's the same people going through like, you know, like a mental health cycle, right? And I'm sure, so they may, they know they're there. I just, there's people there that don't want to be there, have no other choice but to be there, and they're not trying to do harm, but they have needs, and we have to figure out, well, if we're going to throw this on them, let's give them a place, a way to, like I said, have the social services involved. And there's no doubt, there's a lot of calls there, like we've talked about, that are calls that are not good calls, right? Like, it's not a healthy environment, no doubt about that, and that.
Yeah.
And that's kind of the concept here is to, we don't want those, that type of environment going on within those walls within our village, and I, and I get that, and I'm for that, too. I just, I'm for this, I just want to make sure we can mitigate some of those people that are, that need that help.
Of course, and perhaps I emphasize too much on that, you know, one, one instance, but there are many calls we go on where it is disruptive, harmful, dangerous for the other residents. So crimes have occurred, drug overdose, many, many other disruptive incidents, and that's why I wanted to bring this to your attention.
I, I don't disagree.
Yeah, it's not simply medical needs.
No.
It is a wide range of.
And that's what I'm for it, because you can't create, have that environment, you can't foster, have that environment enabled for these people, there's no doubt about it, you know, I just, but there are some there that, like I said, they found a loophole to survive, and we have to make sure there's some way we get them in contact, social. And at, at the end of the day, it's their choice, right? They got to walk through the door, right? They got to like, accept that, but if it's there for them, am I going to sleep better tonight? No, I mean, I, it's, it's, some of the world's messed up, and you hope that they do take up, you know, maybe they'll realize, oh, there's a service here I can contact for my help, for help, great.
Well, that's what I was going to say, counsel and, and chief, there is a way we can tweak this to cover, because I agree with Trustee Schenk, we, this is not aimed at getting rid of, you know.
Well, you got to be careful with that. I mean, the, the exceptions for the 28-day stay are pretty limited. They don't provide exceptions for individuals, it's for, I mean, they, they do, but in limited circumstances.
Right.
A business, corporation renting the, the space.
Well, wasn't there one that said something, yeah?
There was a social service one, too.
Guest providing, a guest providing documentation that they're, they're caring for a patient admitted to a local.
Is there a way we can tweak that temporary housing through a.
Hold on, there's another one in there about social services, is there not?
Yeah, let me, let me highlight the theory there is that there are very legitimate, hard-working social service providers out there that need to place their clients in temporary housing. That is not a concern that, because they provide support, and it's also not an indefinite period of time. So if you have, say, a location, an organization like a Safe Place, and there's others in the area that's, that provide those temporary housing vouchers, they are in contact with the hotel, and they are also providing that level of support that I think everyone's speaking of. I, I really don't think that's a concern, and so that's why we've provided that as an, as a suggested exception. But if they're not supported by one of those social service, legitimate social service providers, I don't think you can write an exception that just says, well, if they're, if they're a person that's in, having a hard way or something like that, we'll, we'll look the other way for them, so.
Well, but if we expanded that, I mean, in, in a little bit of a way, I would think it would cover what Trustee Schenk's talking about, that would, it would maybe, maybe.
Look at it.
Where, where is it?
It's going to be difficult.
Where, where are those exceptions? I can't see.
Maximum stay length, it's.
What's the number?
10 dash 338.
Oh, it's just there.
D as in dog.
Okay, here we go.
And, and this, this ordinance is based on Schaumburg and Gurnee. The language is really taken from those two villages, and they've been very successful with this, this language.
But this is in here, number four, D4, an organization has a contract or similar written agreement to provide a guest with emergency or transitional housing. Isn't that, does that where it falls under, Tim, or?
I, I.
You can't expand it too much, because you know what happens when you give him an inch?
We know, right, right.
So.
I mean, four can be used for social service assistance.
But there's another party involved that allows them to stay there, you know, so when you have like, you know, a criminal element, no one's going to sponsor them.
Right.
And as long as we're locked tight with that, they can't get around that. If they have a social service sponsor, and then the social service company is kind of taking liability for them, right?
Yeah, and this talks about emergency or transitional housing, so there's an end date to that.
Right.
Maybe beyond 28 days.
The definition of emergency and transitional should be defined.
Yeah, what does that, yeah, what does that mean, emergency? What does transitional even mean?
Yeah.
It's, it's short term, I could tell you that.
Well, short term, six months, nine months, a year, two years?
I wouldn't put a date on it, I would definitely put like, a transit, you know, somebody under the care of social services or some, I don't know how to legally put it, but the goal is not, is, the goal is to, don't let the, the ones that are taking advantage handle the loophole to getting, because then we talk about 28 days.
Yeah.
And then they, then they like, okay, well, that's, say it's under John Doe, and then Jane Doe comes in after 29 days, and then we're all staying together.
Again.
And if they're knocking on the door.
Right.
If they're knocking on the door, you know, to say, where's Jane Doe, she's not supposed to be here, she was here the last 28 days, that's going to be a problem, you know, there's still going to be calls.
The goal is not to establish residency, which is the 30-day rule, and again, I think the legitimate social service providers, first of all, they don't have the means, and they don't have the interest to put someone up for six months. and they don't have the interest to put someone up for six months. They are temporarily helping people that are in need. And I don't think if, if they're involved in the picture, we're going to repeated calls for those individuals.
If they're involved?
If, if they are involved, if a legitimate social service-
They're basically, they're picking up their liability.
Right.
They're on their radar.
It's limited time, their third party that's invested in success, and I think the hotels also learn who they can rely on for that third party.
Is it too much to ask for these social services to say, you know, I need to put somebody in for thirty days, or sixty days, let's use sixty days, to, to clear that with the village as part of the ordinance, an exception to the ordinance?
Yeah, I think the idea was that when we periodically review the registration log, we would see the registration dates, and for those who were being granted an exception, we would request the documentation to verify that it was legitimate, that it met one of the, the exceptions in the code. And the failure to do so on the part of the hotel would be a violation.
Any other problems at the other two hotels on the list here?
Nothing, nothing, nothing like the frequency, right. They always possibility to have calls for service at any hotel.
How did we get two approved, two extended stay Americas like a mile away from each other? When did that happen?
I'm not sure.
Before anybody here, huh?
It's been a while.
Come. Is that just how it rolls? You didn't expect this?
The one was, you know, fairly early with the, with the-
Yeah, Woodlands was originally Homestead.
Executive Park, and the second one, I don't, I don't remember.
Look, before COVID, it was, it was, it became a COVID thing, inflationary.
A lot of it, most of it had to do with, with, you know, the corporate and the idea of a place for corporate.
You just don't want them starting to kind of like tents popping up here and there.
Right.
So what about the people who've already been long in a, longer than thirty days that have so-called residency? What, what happens?
That will be one of our, I'll get to that in just a second. That is on my, my last slide. The, the only thing I wanted to hit on this one was just briefly on the, on the enforcement side of it, the definition of nuisance. If you do, the, the hotel can be determined not by us, but it, by adjudication hearing officer or a court to be a nuisance hotel. We would bring the, the case, basically saying that they met the definition of a nuisance hotel based on the frequency of, of nuisance incidents at that location. So three incidents in a hundred eighty, eighty-day period would, would give us cause to take that request to the adjudication hearing officer or a court to, for the declaration that it is in fact a nuisance hotel. There would also be a provision that five incidents in a year could all, could give us cause to bring that action as well. So that is the, sort of the mechanism of, of having the nuisance declaration made. The penalties beyond just the traditional penalties available would be the suspension of the license in this case, because it would be a license. We did borrow from Gurnee reimbursement of village costs, so we could calculate police costs, for example, for repeat calls, suspension, revocation, temporary closure, et cetera. So one of the, one of the things that we've been talking a lot about as a staff is how to implement this, working cooperatively with the hotel management to roll it out. There's an education component here. All of the, by this, by these regulations, all of the hotel staff would have to be made aware of the certain section of this, this code. So what constitutes a nuisance, what the violations are, what their obligations are as a hotel staff person. So there would be a cooperative rollout. We've talked to them about how to provide notice. We don't have any issue being the bad guy in this case. It is their business, and we do want to make it clear that it's a village regulation. So we would work with them on crafting a notice that could be placed under the doors, placed at the front counter, handed to new guests registering. That makes it very clear what, what the, the obligations of the hotel are as required by the village. So just very, let, let them stay out of it. These are people who are paying the money, and allow us to, to, to be, like I said, the bad guy. So we've also talked about having, having the same suggestion to the hotel that they provide social service information at the front desk if they're not doing that already. That's one of the things that we could do when we, we roll this out with them. So the, the last piece of this was the, the type of feedback that I had mentioned in the memo, an initial deadline. How long would we want to give the, the four hotels to complete the licensing process was one question. The next question, as Dr. Oppenheim had asked, how, how do we handle the twenty-eight days? Do we take the twenty-eight days and start it at, at the date of initial licensing, or do we take into account that maybe somebody has been there, out of the folks that we had repeat calls with, some have been there for years at this point. So I think we had six out of those twenty-one guests have been there over two years. So how to, how to handle the twenty-eight day clock? What's the starting point? The third question was the fee. Right now, in the, in the code, it's a two hundred fifty-dollar fee. We don't have the administrative issues associated with it, we would, with the proposed regulations. So it might warrant an additional fee just for the, the amount of administrative work we're doing on it. In the code right now, the draft, there's staff discretion on dealing with the implementation of the safety features. So the hotel, an existing hotel might not have the video surveillance that we would require in the code, but the police department could work with them just to make sure they have certain minimal coverage, front desk, main entrance, that sort of thing. So we want to make sure that the, the board is comfortable with that level of staff discretion with implementing the safety features. And the last thing was just, again, the staff discretion question on how to, how to handle compliance checks. I think we can work with them, take the examples from Gurnee and Schaumburg, find out what was most effective for them in terms of the frequency of checking the, the registry, the frequency of being in contact with the hotel staff. So those things are not written black and white into the code, so they are written to have some level of staff discretion at this point. So that was the, the five points for feedback that we were looking for. If there's any guidance on this, I guess that assumes that there's support for it. But making that assumption, if there's any thoughts on those five points, we would appreciate it.
Can I add one thing to answer trustee Oppenheim? So for those who have been there for more than thirty days, as the chief mentioned, they've established residency. They, if they don't leave voluntarily, they have to be given thirty days notice. They're on a month-to-month tenancy, just like in a lease. If they don't leave voluntarily, the hotel would have to go through an eviction process in the Lake County court system to get them removed. So that is something we have to, to consider. There may be, there may be a delay beyond just the, starting the twenty-eight day clock.
So, so would there be any harm in giving an extended period initially? Because some of these people really have no other place to move to, and there, there, there aren't a lot of apartments for rent or places to rent in, in the community, especially at the lower price point.
I think that's a policy call by the, by the board in light of police-related concerns.
Question, in a, in a police-related, you're called out, disorderly conduct. The individual is then taken to the cor, I mean, to the police station, am I correct or incorrect?
It, it depends on the severity of the crime, whether or not they're taken into custody. They might be issued a citation, issued a warning, or taken into custody and, and processed and, you know.
So doesn't that sort of lead to a point where you sort of evicted the individual out of-
No.
The room?
No, the, it's, the-
Oh, right.
The issue of custody wouldn't affect their residency, their, their, their established residency. And it, it would have to be a very serious crime for them to be held more than, you know, a day, not being released, on pre-trial release the following day.
You said Schaumburg implemented this, right?
They did.
So this is interesting. So I was just popping up on their extended stay America, and I put in one month, and it was everything's like sixty-five dollars. I put in a three-month stay. Vernon Hills, fifty-eight dollars a night. But when you get to the Schaumburg ones now, it's a hundred ninety dollars a night. So they're mitigating it by increasing the rates. So if you do thirty days, it's like, you know, they're sixty-five dollars, but if you go over that, they're at a hundred ninety. So you're like, they know nobody's going to pay eighteen thousand dollars for three months. So that's probably how they're taking the ordinance and just say, they're just increasing the rate over a certain amount.
Because they have a limit. Schaumburg has a limit as to the number of days you can stay.
That's what I'm saying. So there, so if you look at Schaumburg Convention Center, Schaumburg Suites, they're three times as much because they know that they can't keep them. So they're basically using that to get, so that's probably, same company.
Or you're saying that that's, that's for those exceptions when it's paid for by a business?
I don't know. That I don't know. I think that's just how they're saying, they're saying like, they're not going to go to Schaumburg, so they'll go down the street to Rolling Meadows.
Yeah.
So that's what's going to happen. So maybe, I guarantee you, that's how they're going, so they've dealt with this. So they're going to mitigate that with their rates, you know? So it'd actually probably make our life a little easier, knowing that once the ordinance is, is, is in play and they're, and they understand it, it's a go, you know, but they have a, a way to, to handle this with their guests. They're just going to raise the rates. If they don't pay, then they don't pay because it's upfront. So that-
They could have raised the rates at any time.
They can raise the rates at any time, but it, it seems pretty clear here. It's only the Schaumburg ones that have that. West Dundee has it. So my guess is that extended stay America, whoever owns it, Hilton maybe, I don't know, they're gonna, they're, they're just gonna have, if, if the ordinance passes, as is, they'll just have to deal with it. And then hopefully, on our end, if we can find ways to provide social services for people that need it, you know, when those days come, or, or every twenty-eight days, or they reach out, or social services knows there's certain people here, that's how we do it. I just want people to have the option, who need it, have a place to go or a way to get out if needed. The criminal, the criminal element, it's got to go. It's got to go.
Sure.
So I'm for this. I mean, I'm, I'm for this ordinance.
So back to the video surveillance aspect of it, did you say that neither of the extended ones had sufficient video surveillance at this moment?
The chief probably knows a little more than I do about it, but my recollection is they, they would not, I don't think either one of them would comply with what's written in the code on day one. I think one of them had more coverage than the other. Is that right?
I, that's correct, and it was one of the concerns we heard from management, and I don't want to take our eye off the ball here. The research that our attorney did, I think, picked from the best of the ordinances and establishes the right expectation. And so what we're suggesting here is there be a, a triggering event to improve those if there's substantial redevelopment or rehab of the hotel, or it sells to a new owner. That should be part of that investment. But we know their focus is really, let's get the residency ordinance fixed, and let's set the understanding that as long as they have an adequate system, that's better than, than, than nothing. And they all have something now. We'd want to inspect that. Maybe there's a small adjustment needed right off the bat, but I don't think we're going to ask, it wouldn't be my recommendation that we ask them to get fully compliant with all of the security, the video security measures, because that could be a significant expense that isn't really going to solve the problem that we're presenting to you.
Okay. I was just wondering if, if there was going to be a significant expense, if we could give them, you know, a certain amount of time, six months or a year or whatever it is to-
That's what we're suggesting.
To fully vet the different systems.
We won't, we won't put a, we won't, this ordinance says that their current systems will be deemed adequate with, with maybe some minor exceptions. We haven't done inspection because that's not in our licensing power right now.
Yeah.
But we certainly are not going to ask them to revamp their entire security video system. If we find that, for instance, their front counter is not actively working, we're going to tell them to fix that. But we're not going to ask them to become fully compliant unless there's a triggering event, sale of the hotel or whatever. So I would not expect, expect to see much expense borne by them unless they sell the property or do a massive rehab.
You don't, you don't think they would need to make some investment, even like for the backdoor areas or other areas that they might need to-
I believe they all have-
Sufficient for that level?
I believe they all have a current operating system. I just can't say that we've inspected it, and if we find out that there's deficiencies, we'd want to make incremental changes. All I'm suggesting is we would not go in there and say, you need an entire new system, fully compliant with the village ordinance. That's why we're suggesting put an exception in there, that this is a standard for new construction, and this is a standard for sales. But otherwise, as long as they have the front entrance and the hotel lobby covered, I think, I, I think that's what we're expecting on, on day one.
And then, yeah, but what about back entrances, side entrances? Why, I think that, I don't, I don't want to wait ten years till they sell the place to, to have some video log of potentially-
I wish I could say I felt I had an inventory of what the four hotels' status was. I know they all have some level of video security system, but I don't know how many of their doorways are covered by that. Some of them probably better than others.
I mean, these days, it's pretty, pretty reasonable to, to, to find some level.
It was a concern we heard from the management, and that's why we, we were, we definitely heard from them, when we have a three-level building and you go all in, that's considerable money. That's what we're concerned about. So-
Yeah.
We're trying not to, we're, we're trying to scratch a right itch and, and not create another, another issue, perhaps.
Other comments, concerns, questions? Action tonight is just, you want, go ahead?
Direction. Just consensus to bring it back as an ordinance to amend chapter ten. And then if there's any, any particular consensus on those, those points, the rollout, the initial deadline, how long to give folks, we can certainly write those things into the recitals of an ordinance or into the, to the draft code itself.
Okay.
So assuming we had consensus today for an ordinance, it would come back at the next meeting two weeks from now, and that it'd be-
Might take us a little longer than that, depends on what else is coming up.
Okay, a month from now, whatever.
Yeah, we would come back on our new business.
On our new business with an actual ordinance.
With an actual ordinance drafted, in that point, we can have further discussion. If for whatever reason, there's elements of the ordinance that aren't up to the board's standards, we can either defer the item or amend the ordinance and approve it accordingly.
Okay.
So do we want to talk about timeframe then? I mean, do we want this immediate, or do we want to give people a little bit of notice? Is there-
Well, it's going to take a while to-
Well, it's not going to take that much time, and they're, they're not going to know unless you tell them, because we're not forcing them to tell the residents right now that we're working on this. So they won't know until the data becomes active and we give them notice. So those people have twenty-eight days unless we say, you know, from the date that the, that the ordinance becomes effective, we will give the initial residents, you know, ninety days or so. And then from then on, it's twenty-eight days, just to give people a little bit more time. I mean, even, even if they're not problem tenants, it's still, it's still a harsh move.
Can I ask, I'm assuming what you're suggesting is, someone that's already established residency beyond thirty days, they would be granted some leeway before it takes effect. You don't delay the start of this for ninety days and allow all new, okay. So just so I understand how, how to ask Jim to draft this, I follow.
Well, but counsel, we can't, if somebody's already been there more than thirty days, this wouldn't really apply to them because they-
You'd have to give them thirty days notice. They're, they're month-to-month tenants at that point. They would need thirty days notice from the hotel minimally.
Yeah.
So, but what Kevin just suggested, I, I can find out if Schaumburg and/or Gurnee had a rollout period and bring that back to you.
If it's month-to-month, I bet that's what they, the hotel did. Because if they don't want it, and now they have an ordinance to back them up, they're just going to raise the rate month-to-month. They don't have to, if they're going month-to-month, right? So every time it renews, right?
No, no, it's twenty-eight days within a sixty, no more than twenty-eight days-
I'm sorry.
Not more than a sixty-day period.
No, you missed, I'm, I'm miscommunicating.
They're gone.
No, of, of a hotel, yeah, I guess.
They're gone after twenty-eight days.
Yeah, but the ninety day, the ninety day ones.
The only-
Is there, is there, whoever's been there more than thirty days, what's their grace period to get out of there?
Thirty.
Thirty days.
Thirty days. And if they refuse to leave voluntarily-
Then they go through- Then they go
Then they have to go to
But that's my point. So if, if it's, they get to the 30-day, their first 30 days, and they get into that grace period, or whatever, let's say they've been there for a year, and that grace period, and then the hotel knows it's coming, if they're renewing it month-to-month, that last 30 days, they can jack up their rent, and say, hey, you've been here a year, you're $400 a day. Right?
The hotel can do that.
The hotel can do that.
It could do.
This is gonna be on the hotel to be compliant, right? We're gonna, the village code would set the rules, but it's between the hotel and their guest, how they get their compliance, and whether they go legally to eviction, or whether they adjust the rates, because it's only a 30-day, you know, there's more than one ways to gain compliance.
I'm just saying, it's, it's somewhat cruel to tell the hotel, okay, now you've gotta tell these people have been there two years, you have to get them out of here in 28 days, or you have to evict them.
But some
For the first
Well, I would question that, just based on a constitutional, you know, that, what, does this qualify as ex post facto for that kind of a person who's already been there?
Well, this is in the nature of a zoning measure. This is public health, safety, and welfare, police power of the village.
Okay.
The residents there don't have a constitutional right to live there.
Okay.
You know, this, this is a regulatory scheme that's a valid act of police power of the village.
Okay.
So
Can I ask, how, hello?
Yes, Roger.
Can I ask, yeah, Jim, for hold on.
Yes.
Will this address, you know, I guess, the elephant in the room, if the bus pulls up in the middle of the night, and drops off a lot of people?
I, I, there are different regulations, well, well, no, no, I, I don't think so. This, this doesn't change residency, or, I'm sorry, this doesn't change how the hotel takes in its guests, as long as they don't stay more than 28 days. So I, I'm not sure it would address the, the issue that you've raised. It, it just limits it to 28 days.
Okay. Well, we probably should think seriously about adopting this, because we don't have any ordinance to this extent. Correct?
Roger, I didn't hear you.
No, we don't have an ordinance that speaks to this at this time.
We do not, that's correct, sir.
So we should think seriously about adopting this.
Sure.
Yes.
We, we, we think it's, it would be effective. We also wanna address all the concerns here tonight. This would be effective.
I think that's a consent, is that
Yeah.
You wanna adopt.
Yeah.
So I would propose, could we say, for the, for those residents who've already been there for longer than 28 days, then, then we'd give an initial 90-day, or whatever, grace period, but then going forward.
To give some flexibility.
To give, you know, limited flexibility. That's not even a lot of time, 90 days, to, to find a new place to live.
I mean, I would say 60, yeah, I mean
You're probably gonna need that amount of time to educate the hotel ownership on this ordinance.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, so Zach.
Effective date, 90 days out.
Given you the direction we need to go forward, everybody's working on this, so
Thanks.
Okay.
I think we got the direction we needed. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. That's it?
So that's it for this evening?
I move to adjourn.
Wait, are we, we have nothing?
We do have closed session for collective bargaining and litigation.
Okay.
So
I move to adjourn and go into closed session for collective bargaining, litigation.
Okay, motion, a second to go into adjourn the committee, hold on, go to closed session, all in favor, no, roll call, please.
Roll call.
Yes.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
President Byrne?
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tem Cook?
Aye.
Motion carries. We are adjourned, and we will not be conducting any business after we come out of closed session. Thank you and good night.